Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland and Wetlands Water Course Commission to water. The date is Wednesday, October 6, 2021, and the time is 7:00 PM. Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
(inaudible)
Roll call. Ally?
Eileen McKean.
Jim Vitale.
Deborah Phillips.
Jen Passeretti.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
Okay. We're going to have consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting from July 14, 2021. Is there any comments regarding the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of July 14, 2021 be accepted as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Now, the special meeting of August 3, 2021. Is there any comments regarding that meeting? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the special meeting on August 3, 2021 be accepted as submitted.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Okay. The meeting that was supposed to be September 1, 2001, was canceled. No minutes. Okay. Going down into old business, we have a long agenda, so we're going to move along kind of quickly on the simple ones. Old business. Application 821-6.1, Justin Street, North Elm Street, Cho School. That's been withdrawn. Okay. Item 2, application 821-6.3, 1468 Tuttle Avenue, Dan Petrowski and Jen Baudier, in-ground pool, and an after-the-fact tree removal and fence install. The pool was granted administration approval. This discussion then tonight is regarding the after-the-fact, the wetland involvement, we'll say. How you doing?
Good yourself?
Erin, you want to bring us up to speed?
Sure. All right. So, the environmental planners' report dated August 31 went out in your packet. You got it on Friday night, and it kind of summarizes what has happened, as the chairman noted, with a special meeting on August 3 at this property. And then they got the administrative approval for the pool to move that forward. That is, it just touches the upper upland review area, so it wasn't an issue. We could go forward with that. And tonight, what we're left with is the application. It's on page 2 and 3 of my report. And we're talking about what they're going to do with that existing white vinyl fence in the back that's partially in wetlands and partially in the upland review, and several trees that were removed in the backyard. And then, of course, they've got to stabilize the area. And separate from that, is there notice of violation? That's at the end of the agenda, but you can deal with it together. And I recommend some action about that. We can go through that if you'd like.
Well, I think, I was not there at that meeting. I was there when they test bit the pool, so I know the area or the sign. But have you seen the recommendations from Erin for conditions of approval?
Yes.
And are you in agreement with them?
With the exception of having to move the fence, no. We'd like to leave the fence.
Well, her recommendation is...
Is that, is that on the microphone?
May I talk to them? Okay, thank you.
Sure. My name is Dan Petrowski.
Jessica Boudreau.
Okay. Her recommendation is for the fence to remain. Is that correct, Erin?
For the, for the part of the fence to remain, the part of the fence that's in the wetlands, for that to come out. That's seven sections. And David Lord, their wetland scientist, also recommended for that to come out. Just the part that's in the wetlands. The rest can remain.
And how much of it's in the wetlands?
About half. The southern half, I guess it is, southern, right? Yeah, southern half is in the wetlands, and the northern half is not in the wetlands.
And didn't we talk about leaving it up? It would do more damage to pull it out and take it down. Trash in the area in there?
You can, that's, that's the commission's prerogative to make a decision. There's pros and cons.
Any comments, commissioners?
I...
Regarding leaving the fence there, is where it is right now existing?
I, I, I say leave it.
Debbie?
It may be more detrimental to the wetlands, I think, to take out the post. So, I would just leave it.
Ally?
I agree.
Nick?
I thought we were understanding the day we were out there that the brush pile was going to stay for the environmental impact as far as critters living in the brush pile. And then the fence was going to stay because it would be more damage to take it down than to leave it there. It wasn't doing anything.
All right.
All right.
Well, when the notice of violation is affirmed, I'd ask that the commission affirm the notice of violation tonight, because we tend to do that so that we don't release it until all the work is done that we're asking for. But, so, we can, the chairman can stipulate exactly what is allowed to remain and what's going to go. You know, when the commission arrives with a decision on that, you stipulate what can stay, what's to go, and then the...
Okay. All right. Regarding the notice of violation, have you read that section of her report?
Yes.
And have you any issues with those comments on her report?
I've read it. I don't, again, I don't have it memorized.
Okay. Tree parts deposited in four of the sweat lanes are allowed to remain. The trash and placecape parts shall be removed.
The placecape has been removed, and the other stuff back there's been removed.
Portions of existing fence installed in wetlands shall be removed. That's what we're discussing right now. Mowing of all that wetland area previously maintained as lawn will cease. That looks like that has been done.
That has been done. It hasn't been touched.
Above wetland, above wetland area to be marked with placards as a reminder of protected area, low fencing and other appropriate restriction installing be installed along well and boundary in this vicinity. I don't know what additional fencing restrictive is staying, but I think leaving the white fence there and placards should do the, do that job. Declare that the notice of violation, declare that the notice of violation remain in effect until remediation is satisfied completely. Well, other than taking the sections out, you've pretty well satisfied the notice of violation.
We believe that.
Conditions.
Yes.
Okay, commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, when we were all out there, the, the owners were kicking around different ideas of how to mark that. It cuts diagonally across their backyard, the mowed area, non-mowed area. We were kicking around ideas. They were thinking a low fence. Somebody said boulders. Now, you've just said placards on posts. So, I just want to see what, what is suitable for their uses for the backyard with that, regarding that.
I mean, we were thinking the placards would be fine. I mean, we know it's there. We won't mow it.
You got the trees right there. Placards on the trees, everyone will be able to see them, see them. But, Nick?
The placards could be put on the fence, and they'll stand out because of the white fence. It's up to you. We gave you a bunch of different ideas of what to do as far as the garden and that stuff, so. If you're comfortable with leaving the fence and Erin's comfortable with putting the placards on the fence, I'm, I think that's a good idea. But she made differ here.
Ally?
I think that is the gist of what we discussed on site, and consensus among us was pretty much that the fence would remain and that the, the large triangle of wetland area would be delineated somehow up to the homeowner.
Okay, delineated. What do you think about delineated?
Well, as the, Erin had brought up, that if they sell the property at some point in time, that new people may not realize where the wetland edge is. But if it's marked on the fence and then marked on the trees so that, you know, the three tri, the three points of the triangle?
Well, I think there's no question with the placards.
Right.
After that, another fence installed on that corner. Let's just go on. Debbie?
Maybe some small boulders along the edge there, because I think it's hard, once you're cutting with the lawnmower. It's easy to go over a little bit and then go over a little bit again and not realize you're going over the line where you shouldn't be cutting. So, you need, I think you need something there to, you know, keep the mark, the line there.
Jen?
Yeah, I agree, there needs to be something, but I think we should leave it up to the homeowners to decide how they want to, their property to look.
How about shrubbery? How about some plantings?
That would be good, yeah.
Across there, a few...
Whatever they, whatever they want.
Shrubbery would work.
All right. All right, Erin?
Is shrubbery a good idea for the owners? I'm asking Dan and Jessica. A few, a few bushes, not a lot.
Even, even something like a row of daylilies or, you know, something that's...
Oh, that's a good idea. Something pretty.
Something that's there, there in the summertime, that doesn't really need to be there in the wintertime because they're not mowing.
I guess we'd be open to that. We just don't want to, you know, if there's anything invasive, we shouldn't plant, or things we should stay away from.
Stick with stuff that's native. Daylilies are native. So, you know, just do a little Google and pick out something you like.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, into that.
All right. Okay. So, basically, if we're going to put the violation sort of in together with the application, which we, which we do, I mean, you do one, you fix the other. So, you're going to agree to all of her recommendations, to the approval of the application. And with taking out the, the comment about the existing fence coming out, you agree with, with her 1, 2, 3, 4 items, with the boundary being documented with vegetation, with some kind of plantings?
Yes, yes.
All right. How do we put that into a motion now?
Do you want to add something about that placard?
Well, you've already got the, the, in the, in the, next to the last paragraph, "other appropriate restrictive vegetation be installed along the wetland..." I don't know about restrictive, but vegetation be installed.
Yeah, but it doesn't say where. I mean...
Mr. Chairman, we could add the placards on the white vinyl fence, or just one or two?
Well, I think, I think you're going to be there assisting in placards and possibly the species of vegetation.
A one or the other?
No, both.
Okay.
I mean, something silly, as simple as Ally discussed. All right. Is there a motion on, on the table? Or motion made?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application 821-6.3, 1468 Tuttle Avenue, Don Petrowski and Jessica Boudreau, after-the-fact tree removal and fence installation be approved with the recommendations in the planners' report of August 31, 2021.
Okay. All right.
Well, could you...
But I think there's a little more to the...
Do the notice of violation separately?
Okay. Yes, you could do it separately, yes.
Okay. All right. Very good. That's right. So, the motion's made to approve this application, subject to the conditions of recommendation by Erin. Is there a second?
Jen Passeretti, second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Jen?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Deb, Jen?
Yes.
Okay. All set?
Thank you for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask, Commissioner Phillips, did you, did you say the seven sections of fence shall remain?
No, I didn't. I didn't include those.
She eliminated that paragraph.
Oh, just that bullet is gone?
Yeah, I just, I just eliminated it.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I didn't get that, okay.
Okay. Paragraph's gone, but the fence stays.
Yep. All right. Application 821-7.1, 90 Mansion Road, that was an after-the-fact drainage improvement, granted administration approval. I think we saw a brief bit of that back in August. So, that was done unless there's some problem. Application 821-7.2, 400 South Orchard Street, Executive Auto, removal of portion of the parking lot, and, and there was no increase or decrease in impervious surface, so that was granted administration approval. All right. A21-7.3, 19 Tarot Farms Way, wholesome pools, above-ground pool ingrading for pool, granted administration approval. I think, Erin, I don't remember this one offhand, but apparently we discussed it, and it seemed to be under control. Okay. All right. Let's go to A21-7.4, Tully's Road, Quinnipiac River, Town of Wallingford Bridge, superstructure replacement and substructure maintenance.
Allison Kapasinski, town engineer.
Ajit Gokhla, AI engineers, project manager.
So, the town of Wallingford has hired consultant AI engineers to design and permit the, the replacement of the Tully's Road Bridge superstructure over the Quinnipiac River. The replacement is based off of DOT inspections. This substructure is in good enough condition to, to remain as is without affecting the lifespan of the bridge, and it was just recommended for the replacement of the superstructure. We have prepared a quick overview presentation, shouldn't be more than five or so minutes, just to give you an idea of the project, and would be happy to take any questions.
Are you removing the steel beams from this bridge?
Yes, we'll be removing steel beams, yes.
Yeah.
All right. So, you already know Allison. I'm Ajit Gokhla, again, project manager with AI engineers. Quick overview of what we're going to go over is existing conditions of the bridge. I'll be brief about this. Proposed design, rights-of-way impacts, utility impacts, permit plans, which is the main thing, invasive plants that are in the area, and we have a short project rendering towards the end, if anyone's interested in watching that. Bridge location, as you see, it's a Tully's Road shown right there in the aerial view. Bridge is located right on Tully's Road. The bridge is split between two towns, North Haven and Wallingford, and there is a right-of-way line that goes through the bridge, which I'll show you in a minute. You can see Wilper Cross or Merritt Parkway on the left of the picture, north being towards the top of the picture. Just a brief overview of the town lines. The red rectangle is where the bridge is. Wallingford is on the right, and North Haven on the left, and then pretty much on the north also there's a Town of Wallingford area. And Hampden is on the, on the far left, on the west, which we are not impacting, but just town boundaries for, as an overview. Why we are replacing the superstructure, this is a quick summary. The concrete deck is in satisfactory condition. The superstructure, which is basically the steel beams and the deck together, does not have enough capacity to carry today's live loads. When I say today's live loads, it doesn't mean like the bridge needs to be posted, but it's HL93 is the term, the loading that we use for bridges these days. This bridge was designed in 1980 or '78 through '80 by Connecticut DOT for a previous live load, so that's all it means. Substructure is in good condition, like Allison already explained. The, the abutments are on concrete piles, so we are going to leave them and reuse them. Some functional characteristics of the bridge, the width of the bridge is 32 feet, that is actually curb-to-curb width is 32 feet. So, it carries two 12-foot lanes, one in each direction, has four-foot shoulders on each side. We are not planning to widen the bridge because there's a constraint on the west side, Route 15 bridge, unless that is widened, we cannot widen this bridge. So, it'll remain its existing width. The bridge is not scour critical. It is on piles, so there is no issue with undermining or scouring, though we have to calculate the projected scour, which I can describe later on. The bridge is high enough, in plain language, it's high enough to pass a 100-year flood. The current under clearance on the bridge, which is the distance between the lowest member on the bridge to the 100-year water surface is 1.4 feet. We are going to marginally improve that to 1 foot nine and a half, which I'll show you further down. The bridge railing is adequate, the way it is right now, but it'll be changed to a more current standard. Sufficiency rating is just, it's a, it's a conglomerate formula which includes many features of the bridge. It's like a, it's like a number. So, for example, if the bridge sufficiency rating is less than 50, you, you have to replace the bridge, if it's, if there's federal money, for example. So, that's, just to give you an idea. Average daily traffic, which is ADT, is 8,400 vehicles per day, so it's pretty highly traveled road. So, the overall site plan, the, the dark blue that you see is basically the Quinnipiac River. The light blue is the, the wetlands area, inland wetlands area. The middle portion is the bridge, obviously, the light brown or yellow, if you want to call it. And the light yellow color is, is basically showing the project limits of this project. We'll be paving on the east side, say about, about 200 feet. On the left side, we'll terminate the project just before it hits Route 15, you know, which is only 25, 50 feet. I apologize for the resolution. I took the snapshot from the original plans of the bridge, from 1980 plans. So, that's what's out there right now. It's a girder bridge. It's a two-girder system. It's 113-foot span. We'll be basically maintaining the span, and the existing girders will be replaced with a truss bridge, truss superstructure. So, basi, the footprint will remain the same. There's, there won't be any change in the footprint or the span length. These are just two views from, as the bridge viewed from each side. The view on the left is basically looking towards 15, Route 15, from the bridge, looking west. The view on the right is basically looking east as you come down from South Turnpike towards Tully's Road, and then you travel under Route 15. So, what you see there is Route 15 before you get to the bridge. So, that's the constriction. So, because of that existing bridge, this bridge cannot be widened. These are just views of the river. We took these pictures during winter, so you don't see any vegetation, but upstream view on the left side, downstream view on the, on the right side, as seen from the bridge. This is just a little brief history of what was there years ago. Original bridge was a truss bridge that was built and fabricated by Berlin Steel in 1898. Then the bridge was again reconstructed in '68 and '70. Unfortunately, I don't have any pictures of that bridge, but what's there today is the bridge that was built in 1981, that you saw earlier. This is again, a proposed project plan, again, a repetition. I don't want to go over this again. I skip that one. This is a zoomed-in view of the new bridge plan itself. So, the light brown that you see in the middle is, is the bridge. Then we have approach slabs at each end. On the right side, you have an approach slab that is shown just to the east of the bridge. On the left, we are looking at maintaining the existing approach slab possibly, so that's why it's not shown in dark brown. It's shown as the, is in light yellow color, which is the pavement. And again, we have callouts there. I apologize for the resolution again, but... So, this is what the new bridge is going to look like. A quick note on that is it's going to be a truss bridge. It's going to be a galvanized steel truss, so it won't look brown in color like I show in the PowerPoint, but it'll look more silver gray. It'll be made from, you know, current steel grade fabricated to current standards. The span will be maintained 113 feet. What we show there is the elevation of the water. The 100-year water elevation is about 23.75. The current, unfortunately, I don't have a pointer to point to, but there's an under clearance shown as 1 foot nine and a half, which is the clear distance between the bottom of the truss to the water surface. So, that's the intent of showing this. So, it'll be a minor improvement for the 100-year flood elevation to pass through smoothly without impacting the bridge or without overtopping it. The 500-year flood, which is not shown there, it also marginally passes under the bridge, so that also will not overtop. But these are...
I want to just stop you a moment.
Sure.
First of all, the majority of this bridge is in North Haven. And, and are you going to give the same presentation to North Haven?
Oh, we actually already did that.
You already did that?
No.
Okay. Second of it, we want to deal with the wetlands. I mean, you got the bridge up in the sky, and everything's going to be fine.
Yes.
What's your involvement in wetlands? That's what we really need to get to.
Okay, I'll jump to that. Not a problem. So, quick overview of the right-of-way land. The yellow lines are the Town of Wallingford right-of-way, and the center line is Route 15. So, all the portion on the right side there between the two yellow lines is where it's Wallingford's portion. I'll skip that one. These are temporary construction. There'll be temporary construction of the utilities. There's a gas line located on the south side of the bridge. We'll be moving that further south, so due to which there'll be temporary impacts to the, to the wetlands and the water cores. So, the yellow portion that you see there highlighted are all the temporary impacts due to the, due to an access road we'll be building, coming down from the east side... from, you know, current steel grade, fabricated to current standards, the span will be maintained hundred-and-thirteen feet, what we show there is the elevation of the water, the hundred-year water elevation is about twenty-three point seven-five, the current, unfortunately, I don't have a pointer to point to, but there's an under clearance shown as one foot nine and a half, which is the clear distance between the bottom of the truss to the water surface, so that's the intent of showing this. So it'll be a minor improvement for the hundred-year flood elevation to pass through smoothly without impacting the bridge or without overtopping it. The five-hundred-year flood, which is not shown there, it also marginally passes under the bridge, so that also will not overtop.
I wanna just stop you a moment.
Sure.
First of all, the majority of this bridge is in North Haven, and, and are you gotta give the same presentation to North Haven?
Oh, we actually already did that.
You already did that, okay. Second of it, we wanna deal with the wetlands, I mean, you got the bridge up in the sky and everything's gonna be fine, what's your involvement in wetlands? That's what we really need to get to.
Okay, I'll jump to that, not a problem. So, quick overview of the right-of-way land, the yellow lines are the town of Wallingford right-of-way, and the center line is Route Fifteen, so all the portion on the right side there, between the two yellow lines is where it's Wallingford's portion, I'll skip that one, these are temporary construction, there'll be temporary construction of the utilities, there's a gas line located on the south side of the bridge, we'll be moving that further south, so due to which there'll be temporary impacts to the, to the wetlands and the water course, so the yellow portion that you see there highlighted are all the temporary impacts due to the, due to an access road we'll be building, coming down from the east side, down to the banks, and then across the river, what you see as a yellow line is the gas line that will be supported on temporary supports, you know, at the same elevation as of the bridge, so until that is done, we cannot really replace the superstructure, so these are temporary impacts to, to the area. Then this is, little more detail of the access road, again, I apologize for the resolution, but the access road will be about hundred feet plus, it'll be about eight percent grade coming down from the east side, down to the banks, so that's what I showed in the earlier picture with the temporary impacts. Access road will be about ten feet wide, which is shown on the left, there's a little typical section there, I'll skip this one, these are the impacts on the, what you asked me about, on the right side I show the impact areas, the wetland impacts are, permanent impacts, eight hundred and ninety square feet, temporary impacts are nine hundred and fifty square feet, the light blue color is what is the temporary impact, which is the staging area, and in front of the abutments where you see a little half-rectangle, if you will, those are sandbags or cofferdams that we are gonna use to, to barricade so that we can restore the riprap that is in front of the abutments, there's existing riprap that has sort of washed away or eroded, we're gonna replace that in kind. Then again, on the lower right, you see water course impacts, permanent impacts of four hundred and seventy square feet and temporary, so very small impacts to the water course, but those are not permanent, those are, you know, temporary impacts only two hundred and seventy-five square feet. Similarly, we have federal and water course impacts, I don't want to really repeat the numbers, but they are on your screen, again, they are shown in light blue color for the temporary, dark blue shows the permanent, permanent impacts are due to the replacement of the riprap, back to what it used to be, and these are hundred-year floodplain impacts, so the entire bridge site is inside a floodplain, it's an FEMA floodzone AE, there won't be any permanent impacts, basically, we'll be restoring the bridge to what it is in terms of a footprint, the only thing that is getting replaced is really the, the superstructure, the truss, there'll be some minor repair work, patching work on the abutments possibly, but they are in fair to good condition, and we don't see any major work, there won't be any work inside the water as such. So, the floodway portion is basically anything that passes between those two abutments, that's generally defined as the floodway here, hundred-year floodline is shown in, in blue lines, I'm not sure if you can actually see that, but that's the entire expanse of the, of the floodway. One of the questions that was raised was about upland review area impact, so we've identified those, what you see in light purple there is the upland impact, so basically, the purple line behind the wetland line is the upland line, fifty feet away from the Connecticut Wetland Line, and we've calculated the permanent and temporary impacts. Permanent impacts are basically the paving and the grading that we are gonna put back, we're gonna restore the grading, we show contours over there on all four corners, and we showed a total of eight thousand six hundred and twenty-five square feet of total impact on the uplands. The one on the left is obviously on the North Haven side, one on the right is the, the Wallingford side. There are some invasive plants in the area, the ones in the yellow sort of polygon are the false mermaid weed, that is the invasive plant, it's a fair distance away from our project area on the east side, the closest it gets is on the northwest corner, but that's on the North Haven side. Within the yellow, within the orange area that you see, there is knotweed and Japanese, Japanese knotweed and mugwort, that's the plant that we were told that North Haven would like to replace that, not sure if Wallingford wants to do the same, but it's identified, we did a survey of our, botanist did a survey, RIMA Ecological did a survey of the area, and those plants have also been shown on the survey, this is just an aerial map of where they are. With that, I think we have a little project rendering, I don't know if you wanna play the video, but.
Take any questions?
Open to any questions, sorry to rush through this, but.
That's it, simple. Commissioners, questions?
I don't think I have any right now.
Nick? Is the equipment gonna be brought up out of the, your temporary road, is it, the equipment won't be down there at night, right, it's gonna come up out of the, well, the flood area of the river?
Yes, there is a flood contingency plan, in case there is a, there is a flood, there is a contingency plan, we have notes on the drawing, and to answer your question, there'll be some equipment parked in the staging area where I identified along the temporary access road down onto that little, like, square that you saw in the picture, but it won't be permanently located there, it'll be there only during, when the contractor needs it. Most of the staging area that the contractor will use will be on Tully's Road, because this road will be closed during construction, there's an approved D2 route that we have reviewed with the town, along South Turnpike Road and back onto Route Five, so this entire area will be available to the contractor for staging, and they won't be impacting the floodplain with equipment permanently placed there, it'll be in and out of the area.
Okay. Deb?
No questions.
Jen?
So part of this project, you're gonna be eradicating that invasive plant species, the ones that we were seeing there, what's your timeline for the project?
So, our timeline currently is that, post this meeting, we are planning to finish all the final plans by, let's say, end of November or mid-November, get the job advertised by the end of the year if we can, or before the end of the year, so we'll get bids in, and our construction season is gonna start in April of twenty twenty-two, so let's say we get the bids at the end of this year, so that the contractor will have time to complete their submittals, that they have to get in line so that they can start construction, so construction window is gonna be from April twenty-two, April twenty twenty-two through November, next season, basically.
So, basically, your involvement in wetlands issues is the access road?
Yep.
With very little around the abutments, right in the water course?
That's correct.
It's a very simple activity?
Yes.
Aaron, question?
Yes, I have a few questions and, and a few comments. For questions, Ajit, could you clarify for me, or the sand, or coffer, I saw on the plans, cofferdams, are cofferdams, is, are sandbags considered cofferdams, or you're gonna have both?
Sandbags are by definition considered cofferdams, but sandbags are not necessarily a closed system, a true definition of a cofferdam will be a closed system, which is all four sides, like temporary sheeting or steel sheeting that they drive, we are not going to do any of that, these sandbags are gonna be only like a three-sided rectangle in front of the abutments along the banks, just to make sure that when they put the riprap behind it, or replace the riprap, nothing goes into the water, so they are gonna be actually along the edge, not even in the water.
So it's, it's not gonna be true cofferdams?
It's not a true cofferdam.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I wanted to talk about is at the end of the access drive, you have that square area, how close does the grading for the square terminus of that access drive, how close does that come to the ordinary high-water mark?
Ordinary high-water mark is along the abutments, so you are a few feet away, I don't know exactly how many feet away, but it's a few feet away from there. Zoom into that.
So.
Do you see the ordinary high-water line here? And it goes in front of the abutments, and then, there's a little sliver that it impacts, you're correct about that, but this is very approximate, this is, this is not a true representation of what the contractor will actually need, so we can put some controls on the plans.
Wait a minute, why don't you hear her concerns first?
Sorry.
Before you volunteer any, anything.
Okay.
What's your concerns?
Well, I did notice it was a little over into the ordinary high-water mark, and I, I think you wanna pull it back a little bit, and I don't know how much, if any, fill you're gonna bring in to make it level, that square, to make that square level, maybe the square doesn't have to be level, maybe a little bit of tilt on that square, I'm not sure, but I didn't know where the grading ended, and the, is, I can't see, but is there, I guess there's sill fences around that?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so, but it is gonna be graded right near the river, right?
Yes, so the grading, most of the grading will be on the access road, and then as you come down to the flat area, it'll be graded flat, but it won't be absolutely flat, it'll be mostly processed stone that'll be placed on it so that the contractor can place equipment, there won't be any major grading there, it's, right now, if you see, it's fairly flat over there also, so we'll try to blend into what's there with very minimal grading.
I think the river will take care of the final grade, the river will adjust the final grade, go on, move on, Aaron.
Oh, okay, I also wanted to go back to Commissioner Kern's question about parking the equipment there at night, Nick, was your concern about flooding or some other concern about nighttime activities?
No, we were on the same wavelength, I was worried about that platform, if it was gonna be washed away when the high water level, if the water rose, was it gonna wash away his platform, so he's gonna have to continuously repair it, but from what he's saying is, the only time they're gonna use is when they need to get down in there with their equipment to set the beams or set whatever needs to be put in place, so it's kind of a temporary structure that it's, if it's not floatable, it's gonna be floatable when the river comes up.
Okay, right, okay, thank you. I, I wanted to, for the record, go through a few other things, Mr. Chairman, is that okay?
I don't think so. What, what things you wanna go through?
No, I just wanted to note for the record that we, we were required to give notice to the town of North Haven, we did, the town of North Haven was required to give notice to us, which they did, they also received an, an application, so we did that. I wanted to mention that my environmental planners report went out October first, it was in your packet, October first, Friday night, and then today, I wrote a more complete environmental planners report, I handed it out tonight, it's called Environmental Planners' Report-Addendum with today's date on it, and it just gives a little more detail than I could put in the other report, it just gives figures, you know, impact figures and such, and then I have what most important is for, if you feel inclined to approve this project tonight, is the recommendations.
Well, they haven't seen the recommendations, have they?
Yes.
Off of this report, this addendum report?
They got it today, yes.
You got it today, you, you agree with all the conditions of the recommendations?
Yes, um, there is, can, can you review number eight?
Yes, I, I was getting to that, alright, so, most of these, most of the report and most of the conditions pertain to the application you saw tonight. In the audience, we have State Representative Mary Mashinsky, who is representing tonight actually the River Advocates Group, Environmental Group, and the River Advocates submitted a letter last week, I put it in your packet, when they got wind of this project, they were motivated to request use, they were interested in using that access way, because for years, when they go down to do their river cleanups or cut a tree down there, they actually do park in this, nearby on the Susio property, 'cause it's very difficult to get down there, but this will open up a very handy access drive, so they were wondering if they could, if part of that gravel in the access drive could remain, not the whole thing, not the terminus.
Okay, what was the question regarding A? Whether the, the access road stays or not?
Exactly, so our proposal is for it that to be a temporary impact, and then if this were, yeah, would be permanent, so.
Okay, alright, Commissioners, any other comments?
No.
Nope.
So you're, you're in agreement with all the recommendations of Aaron's report?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion regarding, unless there's any more comments, Commissioners? And I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny, well, wait a minute.
Significant.
What am I looking for?
Significant activity.
Significant activity, I know it was there somewhere.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A twenty-one dash seven point four, Tully's Road, Quinnipiac River, Town of Wallingford Bridge, Superstructure Replacement and Substructure Maintenance be declared not a significant activity.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Call for a vote, Ellie?
Yes.
I'll come back to you, no, no, go ahead, Nick.
Usually we see reports on wildlife, what kind of impact it's gonna have on wildlife, fish life, or that kinda thing, this, this is the first time I've seen this tonight, I got it in the mail at home, but there's no reports on any of that stuff, is this, you're exempt from this, or you just don't feel as though it's needed?
So, the.
Who's committed?
In-water work window, which is, impacts the fishing season, is usually from June to September, so that, that will be any, any work near the water, we are not impacting the water. Regarding any wildlife there, we haven't got a complete review from RIMA yet on that, we'll be attaching more information to the RIMA report and submitting that to the town, that is in the process.
And I would like to add that this project is hopefully being funded with lots of funds, and with that, we go through a, a review with the state, and they will refer to fisheries if they deem necessary, we've seen every bridge that we receive lots of funding for get referred to fisheries, so they'll be able to weigh in and provide any recommendations.
So you don't feel there's anything we should be concerned with down there as far as?
Amphibians or reptiles?
Yeah, amphibians or reptiles? Ox turtles?
No, can you remind me with the NDDB report?
We have communicated with the NDDB, and the only thing that came back from the survey that we did following NDDB's request was the invasive plants report, none of, that report did not include anything about any, you know, reptiles or anything like that, but that's what I'm saying, that I would be, I can follow up on that and find out if there is any further correspondence or communication required about that, we don't have information on that presently.
Okay.
We didn't second.
We didn't second yet, I interrupted him.
Okay.
No, we seconded, we're voting.
I, I seconded.
Should vote to you, not a significant activity, yes.
Jen seconded.
Are we, are we, the motion was made regarding significant activity, Ellie voted yes, Nick voted yes.
It was me.
Jen.
What?
Jen.
Jen?
Debbie moved.
Yes, okay, so we didn't have to get the vote yet?
Yes, it was seconded, it was seconded by Jen.
No, we didn't, we didn't get all the votes.
We got stopped at Nick.
Would you consider to retake the vote?
I cannot hear you.
Would you please consider to retake the vote on the motion?
Yes, we haven't finished the vote yet, yes.
I would have to have the vote restarted.
Okay, the vote restarted, the motion was made and seconded regarding that this application is not a significant activity. Okay, started a vote again, Ellie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes, now, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A twenty-one dash seven point four, Tully's Road, Quinnipiac River, Town of Wallingford Bridge, Superstructure Replacement and Substructure Maintenance be approved with the conditions outlined in the Environmental Planners' Report Addendum of October sixth.
Motion made, is there a second?
Jen passed already, second.
Second, any discussion? Call for a vote, Ellie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing for the consultant, we do need a copy of your PowerPoint presentation to be submitted for the file, just, just, you know, paper, the size is okay, if you could do that.
I'll send you the one, yeah.
Okay, going on to application A twenty-one, seven point five, for Marion Mulane, after the fact installation of several yard improvements. Okay, on A twenty-seven, we received administration approval for in-ground pool only, okay, so as. Okay, so, has, have we got a violation on this, Erin?
Well, not exactly. They're applying for after the fact. They did a bunch of improvements in their rear yard, very attractive improvements, I must add. But, um, they didn't realize it was in the upland review area, these improvements. So now they're making good on that by applying. I think, I think the owner has...
So these, these improvements have already been made? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, some, most of them, I'd have to get, I'm not quite there yet, sorry, I have to get my report out. Um, all right, looking at, it was, uh, August 27th report. Um, have they all been made? I list all of them in here on page one. Those have, um, are all there, yes. The after the fact ones are listed on page one. I can read them if you'd like. It's, a small shed is there, crushed stone, garden paths, two of them are there, vegetable gardens there, koi pond, little koi pond, extensive flower garden, a portion of a six-foot vinyl fence, portion of a gazebo, and portion of wire perimeter fencing installed in the upland review area. And in the wetlands, years and years ago, they installed a four-foot-high dog fence, um, that is kind of in need of repair, I guess. Okay. And then, on page two, I go into what's being proposed. At the top of page two, there's two, um, there's some bullets there, I think I made a mistake. Yeah, there's supposed to be three bullets, three bullets. What they're proposing is, um, to, of course, to approve the, all the things I just listed that are there, the after the fact activities. And then, they're proposed in in-ground pool with their patio surrounding the pool, which was approved administratively a few weeks ago because it's way on the upper side of the upland review area. So, uh, as you know, Chairman, you approve that because it's, will not have an impact to the wetlands. Okay. Then the third bullet there is they propose to install an eight-foot black cyclone fencing in the rear of the property connecting to the, um, existing fencing in the front of the property. Of course, with a pool, you are required to do fencing. So tonight, the owner's going to explain how the pool fence corresponds to this proposed eight-foot black cyclone fence, which is proposed to keep the deer away from the beautiful flower garden and the vegetables. So, that's what's being discussed tonight.
My name is Stan Byellick, for Merriman Lane. How are you doing?
Okay. Continue, your project.
Sure. Um, so for, we've lived here for the last 21 years, and over 21 years, my wife especially and I are pretty avid gardeners. I have many pictures showing, um, all of the different plants that we've put into the backyard. And we understand that, you know, the importance of the wetlands. We know there's microbes and, uh, critters and things that are beneficial to our, even to the gardens that we have here. Um, and, you know, we, the challenge we have is that, uh, we've created a vegetable or salad bar in our backyard for, for deer. And so what we're, we're asking is to set back into the woods, be able to put up a fence that could, A, uh, cover the requirements for the pool, but at the same token, be able to keep deer, you know, from entering the backyard.
How high?
Um, I believe the minimum would be six feet, um, ultimately up to eight. We're willing, we're very willing to try to figure out the best way to do this so that it has minimal and no impact. If that means not cementing the posts in, if it means, we'd be very willing to, to open ideas.
Well, I, I think Nick is, is more of an expert on deer than I am, but I think they can do a six-foot fence without too much trouble. I think some of the farms that I've been on, it's more like a 10-foot, that, uh, they keep the, keep the deer out. But, uh, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just commenting.
No, you're right.
But I'd like to see the pictures.
Sure. I can come forward?
Now, just, maybe just the ones in your right hand.
These are the improvements that we made over the last 21 years. Every time other nature takes up something, my wife looks back, looks at additional flowers.
Okay, so, let's see if we can get this thing straightened out. The fence, um, you're going back a considerable distance from the pool with the fence, correct?
Correct.
But it ties together with the existing fence?
Correct.
Um, I mean, you're going to be right in, in wetlands with the fence, correct?
Correct.
So the key, one of the problems there would be on how they're going to install the posts in that wetland area. You can't get in there with a, a 50,000-pound machine and dig a few post holes.
No, you're correct.
So that's, that's a problem. That's an issue. Now, excuse me, on the, uh, on the backside of your pool, you have indicated a koi pond, and you've indicated, uh, the shed is existing.
The, the koi pond is also...
And you got a vegetable garden, uh, to the side. And, and what are these two half moons?
Um, they're crushed stone path. And you can see those.
Are they there now?
Yeah, everything you've mentioned, with the exception of the deer fence is existing.
Is existing. Well, what's, is, is there any of this a negative impact to the wetlands, Erin?
Are they going to be moving forward?
Well, it's already existing. Are there any of these that are negative impact to the wetlands right now?
No. My only concern was with the cyclone fence, that they better check it now and then to see if, with the flow, if anything flows after the storm, that it doesn't get stuck in the fence.
Is there standing water in this wetland area?
I didn't see any. I, probably after Storm Ida, there was standing water, but I didn't see any the day I went.
Yeah, the only time that, that area behind the shed that you see, if we get rains like we did September 1st, there'll be some water there for about 24 hours and then after that it's dry.
Well, I mean, you certainly, I, I'm not, you could raise the chain link fence, or if that's what you're going to use, raise it off the ground. Because you're not trying to keep the rabbits out unless they like your garden too.
No.
It's for the deer that's doing the job on them, and I'm aware of it. Any comments, Commissioners? Let's start with Ellie, if you please. Ellie?
Uh, eight feet is typically sufficient to keep deer out. Um, yeah, they can easily jump a six-foot fence. Um, so your fencing is going back into the wetland that replaces a wire fence now?
Correct.
Does it have to be so far back? Do you use a lot of the woods?
I think the, the reason we would wanted to put it back and, was the fact that if you sit, you know, on our back porch and you look into the woods, we prefer not to see the eight-foot fence. So we want to put it back far enough so that we don't see the fence, because this is all where the wetlands is, it's all brush and it's all trees. So, there's probably a way that we can run it back, maybe not as far as this area, but bring it back far enough so it's, um, not as far in, but not necessarily visible.
So, I'm, I'm not super familiar with what cyclone fence really is. But if it's what I'm thinking that most of the farmers that I know use, it's, it's actually, because it's black, it's almost invisible. You know, once you get it into the shadows, you don't really see that much of it. It's almost like a fine mesh.
Yeah, and I think we're thinking of, uh, some type of a chain link fence that's painted black. I think that's what we were talking about. Yeah, the idea is that you wouldn't probably have to go as far back for it to become invisible. We'd be okay with that. We'd be very open to...
What kind of fencing do you have around the front side? This is going right up to the back corners of your house?
Correct, yeah, we have a PVC brown fence.
No questions.
Jen?
No questions.
Hey. Save the best for last.
Yeah, I'm not going to be long.
All right.
I have a neighbor that, this year, he planted a big garden and he put no fence around it. He put, uh, about every 10 or 20 feet, he put a small steel post in the ground with a little red box on top. I don't know if it's some type of a tirant for the deer, um, if it sends a signal out, if it's sonic or what it is, but he's got a, he had a beautiful harvest out of the garden, um, with, without having to put a fence up. I was really surprised. I haven't talked to him yet to see what he used, but I've gone by there and saw the deer away from the, his garden, eating the grass, but not bothering his vegetables. So I don't know if you want to do a little more homework and see if there's something out there, you can, be no impact to the wetlands, that it's just a steel stake or a wood stake goes in the ground with a little red unit on it, that would prevent the deer from doing any obstruction to your flowers or your vegetables.
Yeah, we've, we've been battling the deer for 21 years now, and we've tried a whole host of, the, the one thing that we have found that works, it's a spray called Plant Skid, which is dried porcupine blood. But my neighbors usually aren't too happy when I put that out because it, you know, it, it has quite a smell. Um, for us, we're going to need some sort of a physical barrier. I, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, we really would like to try to figure a way to get physical barrier up.
I think that, one of the issues, they need something for the pool.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
They need a fence for the pool.
What, will the, uh, building department accept that for a fence for the pool?
The chain link?
Yeah. Well, that far away from the pool?
Why not?
As long, I think as long as the yard itself is enclosed fully.
Yeah, okay. I thought there was a certain distance from the pool, the fence had to be, for security.
I don't think I have a problem with the fence providing on how it's installed. That's really the, the key. If it's, if the holes are dug by hand, or just about dug by hand, I think the, uh, the wetlands will, will, will have a short-term negative impact, not a long-term. So, so the application, all right, Erin, this is a true application, correct?
Yes.
Um, it can't be voted on tonight?
Yes.
It can, why? This is the first time we've seen it.
Because it was submitted July 24th, and the way the statute reads, you got 35, it has to be received, officially received, 35 days after the submittal or the next regular meeting, whichever is first. So 35 days, I counted, and that would be August 27th. So then it would have been received, and then you could have acted on it at the September meeting, but that was canceled. So now we're here. We got, so yes, you can act on it.
All right. Okay, well, then, uh, if, nobody has any more questions regarding it?
I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 21-7.4, for Merriman Lane, Stan Byellick, after the fact installation of several yard improvements and installation of an in-ground pool and patio area, and proposed installation of deer fencing, pool fencing be declared not a significant activity.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Ellie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes. Now, uh, what, uh, I'm sure, here we go. You've seen her recommendations on her report, Erin's recommendations.
Yes.
And you're in favor of them.
Mm-hmm.
And, the commission does, uh, the question becomes whether, I suppose it doesn't make any difference to us whether it's, uh, six feet or 10 feet. That's the homeowner's situation. If he puts up a fence too small, maybe you hang the red stuff on it. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application 21-7.4, for Merriman Lane, Stan Byellick, after the fact installation of several yard improvements in the upland review area and proposed installation of the in-ground pool and patio area, and proposed installation of deer fencing, pool fencing in wetlands be approved with the conditions in the environmental planners report of August 27th.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
The only discussion I have is that, I didn't talk about a red flag, I talked about a little red unit that mounts on a post. And it, it sends out some kind of, either a scent or a, a sonic, I mean, he's got a 60-by-200-foot garden and there wasn't one deer that's in that garden. So, it's not something you take and tie a rag to that just chases the deer away.
If I said that, I said a mistake. I understood you had some kind of, uh, box, whether it had an odor or a sound or something in it.
I'm curious about that.
I, I made that mistake. The, uh, I don't, I don't know if there should be a condition on how that fence is installed. That's going to be the, the big issue, is the condition of approval. I think you need to, um, discuss with Erin, uh, the fencing contractor, when the time comes, because...
Yeah, we'd, we'd be very willing to work with Erin, um, and, and whatever we need to do.
The right, the right guy to, doing the right job.
I believe it's a certain height, he has to go in front of planting and zoning, doesn't he, Erin? Got a certain height?
Oh, not planting and zoning, it'd be the building department, anything over six feet. And they might have just recently changed that to seven feet. You'll have to check with the building department. I believe it's now seven feet. Anything over that, you need a, a fence permit.
Okay.
Okay. Um, any discussion? No discussion, any other discussion?
Nope.
Call for a vote. Ellie?
Yes.
I'm not sure that there's any other motion.
What's the matter?
Is there a motion in place?
Yeah, the motion's been made. Debbie made it, Jen seconded.
Yes, okay.
Okay. So now we'll call for a vote. Ellie?
Yes.
Nick?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Uh, going on to application...
Thank you.
Okay. A 21-8.1, Northrop Industrial Park Road East, 1117 Northrop Road, 1070 North Farms Road, LLC. Anyway, this is for a reconstruction of, uh, Northrop Road. Uh, this applicant is taking down the hump in the road, line of sight, especially where we didn't have the August meeting. Erin and I went over it and felt it satisfied for, uh, administration approval. Okay, A 21-8.2, 7th Doherty Drive, Ryan Shea.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Shea.
Good evening. Um, okay. All right, Erin, there's, uh, is there some reason on this, is on the agenda? I mean, we, we've granted more than one with administration approval?
Yes, well, again, because we don't, didn't meet in September, if you count 35 days, it would have been received...
No, I mean, the, the fact that it's an application, is, is there, is there, is there something negative to this application?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I see what you're saying. It's like, we've been approving a lot of pools, a lot of pools this summer, administrative approval, because they're in the upland review area. In this case, this property has a lot of wetlands in the back, and the drawing that was submitted was really close to the wetlands. Like, if you added the, um, pool surround and the pool fence and the silt fence, it was like in the wetlands. And, well, that's, as if they, if they don't need any grading, it's, we're not clear exactly how much fill grade will be brought in to make the pool level, that's a little unclear. Anyway, I've been discussing it with the owner and he's open to suggestions of how to, how, as I said in my report that went out last Friday, how to turn the pool or how to turn the pool or bring the pool back a little bit. And then in addition, he's, he had been mowing the wetlands in the back. Actually, he mows the wetlands in the back that he owns, and then the wetlands in the back that the homeowners association owns. But he has stopped mowing the homeowners association area when it was brought to his attention. And I believe he's a new owner, right? Two years? So the previous owner had been mowing that, and he just continued mowing that. And we find this not infrequently, that people don't really know where that homeowners association line is, unless it's clear, unless it's clearly marked. So he's stopped mowing that, and I saw it the other day. It's growing in nicely. And I think we'd, open to discussion is if he can still keep on mowing the wetlands on his property. Anyway, he's here tonight to talk about this. He's not in a hurry and wanted to discuss options.
That's a, that's a tough thing to discuss when we're sitting here and not out there on site. That's what, what have you discussed with him about?
All of the above, turning the pool.
And have you come up with any other suggestions?
One of the options is narrowing that section that's closest to the wetlands border and/or bringing it closer to the house, just a matter of how far we want to go, or even kind of turning the pool a little further away from the wetlands, closer to the east side. So open to any options or suggestions.
Pretty hard to make a discussion, especially if this just came out in Friday. Commissioners, comments?
Want to go out and see it?
Probably wouldn't, probably wouldn't be a bad idea to see it. What do you got?
Picture for?
What do you got for pictures?
So this is my drawing.
Oh, I mean, because you can't get in the microphone. It's in our packet, so I grabbed, I got her report.
I should point out that the wet, as I do in my report, that wetland boundary was drawn 30 years ago. So I'm not sure how accurate it is today. And plus, of course, we have the effects of climate change now. So I'm guessing that there's, his land is wetter than it was 30 years ago. So that's another concern, and when they go to dig the pool, I wanted him to look at dewatering and that kind of thing, so.
Well, there seems to be a lot of work left to go on this, Erin, before we can make a decision. I mean, we're certainly not in a position to create a plan for them.
Oh, oh, no, I wasn't expecting a vote tonight, actually.
Well, even, even for next month. I mean, our job is to protect the wetlands and, it's, I don't want to say it's a yes or no kind of an issue, but it is kind of falls into a yes or no. I think, I mean, Nick's suggestion of going out there is a great idea. But this is a lot of work with you and behind, in your office and behind the scenes and trying to get a better handle on this.
Okay. Do you want to set a sidewalk?
I think you're probably going to have to.
Okay.
Or you should, not have to. Question, commissioners, well, there's still, what time's daylight savings time starting?
November 7th it starts.
November 7th?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've still got, we've still got.
Yeah, it is. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I was just talking to myself here. We still got, no, October, we can get a site investigation in at 5 o'clock or something like that. So commissioners, is 5 o'clock work for everybody?
It depends on the day.
I'm sorry? It depends on the day? Take a day.
I can do a Monday or Wednesday. I can't do Tuesday and Thursday.
Monday, Monday's a pretty good day.
Monday's, Monday's good for me.
Monday, the 18th, Monday, the 25th.
One President's Day.
I can do the 18th.
Yeah, 18th.
18th sounds good to me.
18th?
Yep.
Monday, the 18th, 5 o'clock. Okay?
Thank you.
And now please spend some time with Erin, at least try to get where you are at the moment with this plan and where it's going to be. I don't know, a couple stakes in the ground like Nick has suggested before, kind of where the, where some boundaries are, the pool and everything. I think that's Jay's season. All right. Application A 20-7.1 Tully's Road, Pfizer. This is, they're down to finishing up the project. And I, from what I gather, the, the actual remediation of the ground has gone very well, and they've weathered the storms. The problem seems to be the vegetation that they piled up when they removed it to do the soil removal. So Erin's been dealing with them down there, and she's given us quite a pack of pictures. So where do we stand with this now, Erin?
I wanted to pass out some pictures, and I will bring you up to date on where we stand. Could I do that? Pass some pictures out?
Are they different than the ones we have?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Ms. O'Hair. My name is Lucas Hellerich, H-E-L-L-E-R-I-C-H. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, and I work for Woodard and Curran. And we have an office at 213 Court Street in Middletown, Connecticut. And this project is located at 5 and 21 Tully's Road.
So I did go out, the pictures, I took pictures on, the first site visit was August 25th, and then the second one was September 21st, and there's some pictures there from that one as well. The environmental planners' report went out in your packet, written on August 25th. There's been a, so that would have gone out in the September packet, to be clear. It does get confusing with that. There has been a tremendous amount of correspondence back and forth. I have spared you most of it. I did send you some of it. But in any big project, field, situations come up in the field that have to be discussed and reviewed and back and forth goes on. So I did get correspondence. Let's see, let's see what we're talking about here. Correspondence, there is from me on September 14th, 15th. Then I got something from the town engineer on the 16th. I, I wrote again to the permittee on the 20th, the 22nd, and my environmental planners' report was the 25th. The permittee wrote to me on October 1st. He sent two different documents to me on October 1st. He sent something on September 17th, September 11th and September 7th. So you can see there's been, it's been like taking a lot of my time. But you don't have all that. You have some of that. What it boils down to, I guess now, where we are now is, actually, things have gone very well, I should say. Especially considering we had those three large storms this summer, which the permittee was required under the original permit, which we approved last January, I believe. He was, they were required to submit storm reports to see how the site went after big storms. And they did. For each storm, they submitted post-storm reports. And things went better than I expected. I think better than the permittee expected, actually. Some of those reports I did forward on to you. There was no catastrophe with those. The water on the highest one, I guess, was Storm Ida. Lucas can describe that. But the water got maybe to the bottom of the slope, so not even up further up. But they did cover the entire wetland excavation area. You can correct me if I'm wrong? Did it, Storm Ida?
No, none of the storms actually covered the entire area, but they did advance anywhere from halfway to a bit more than halfway across the excavation area. And they didn't quite make it to the, if you remember from the sidewalks, there was that slope, and then there's the wetland area. They didn't quite make it all the way to the slope, but several feet, maybe 10 feet from that slope.
So by and large, things have gone very well out there from, from at least my perspective and my, the sidewalks. No erosion issues to speak of, really. The silt fences are well installed. They did enlarge the turbidity curtain and move it downstream a little bit, and it held. They reported it held through those three big storms. And after each of those storms, actually, every storm, they go and they take the debris out from behind the turbidity curtain that has accumulated. So it's brush and saplings, but it's also like lawn chairs, plastic bags, plastic balls, things like that that wash down. Let's see, they've maintained those trees. If you recall, trees over 15 inches in diameter were required to stay on the site. And in some of the pictures, you see they've protected those trees. And then they've remediated the rest of the project, taking the contaminated soil off the site to, it's taken up to the proper facility in Niagara, New York, I believe. And then they brought in the new material. They did submit in the last, about two months ago, a mineral test of the soil, nutrient mineral test of the soil that they brought in. And then they started planting, like a few weeks ago, three weeks ago, they started putting the restoration plants in. We're talking little saplings like six feet, five feet high, shrubs, and plugs of sedges and rushes, the marshy kind of plants, putting all that in. And that all went well. Issue came up, one thing was simple about the, they wanted to change what was permitted about the storm outfall. The storm discharge outfall was temporarily relocated, and they hooked it back up again. And for that change, I wrote a letter to the town engineer, and she was okay with it, the change. She was okay with it. So they're going to go ahead with that. But then the other thing, the big thing that the chairman and I were conversing about several times was these large piles of vegetative debris. We, I knew there were going to be brush piles. They wanted nine of them originally, way back when. These brush piles were not located on any site plan. They kind of thought they'd wing it, you know, depending on how the site conditions were, where they're going to land. Anyway, so I go out there, and they've got big, big brush piles with all the trees. We're talking, you know, the trees that were 60 feet high are now chopped up in 20-foot sections and stacked, and stacked like this. So that was never my vision of brush piles, nor did the peer reviewer know about these brush. He didn't know anything about the brush piles, but he, he didn't like, when I called him, he didn't want to see tree piles. And then the town engineer weighed in, and she finally, she gave a memo, which I don't know if you got a copy of that, but she said, I don't want any tree piles in, Allison, who was here earlier tonight, I don't want any tree piles in the flood plain at all. And then she clarified, I don't want them in the floodway. I don't want them in the 100-year flood plain. I don't want them in the 500-year flood plain. So the permittee found areas on the site that meet that parameter and has agreed to put, to put brush piles in that area. That doesn't mean, we held fast on the no big trees, but brush piles were acceptable to me and to the town planner, who was out there. Planning and zoning also permitted this as a fill-in excavation. They have a fill-in excavation permit. So that, you know, he got to weigh in on that as well. And I think the brush piles that were out there, there's pictures of them, some of them would be what, when you imagine a brush pile is, a large brush pile, kind of with air in between and some saplings, but not a lot of tree trunks. Oh, I should mention the box turtle, the box turtle, the DEP. This was flagged as a good area for box turtles. So they have a biologist, and he submitted a box turtle plan. And they found quite a lot of box turtles there who secreted themselves under logs and under the dirt. And they kept on popping up inside the cordoned-off area. They kept on coming to the surface. So that was interesting. The final report will be submitted in like a month or, or at the close of the project on the box turtles. But that was kind of a surprise to everyone, how many box turtles are actually out there. There, I think I've.
So what's the issue then? Is there a negative issue that we're getting to here?
Well, okay, circling back, in your October 1st packet, you've got two reports from the permittee, kind of summarizing a lot of what I said, everything that's happened, and talking about the brush piles and talking about the storm reports and so on. I asked Lucas to come tonight just because so much has happened on this site since it was approved last winter that I felt there comes a tipping point where I felt the commission should hear what's happened and maybe comment on some of the things that were happening and just get a better sense of how the project was going and where it's going in the future and what's left to do. And which is what's left to do after this fall. Lucas could put a hard date on it, but what's left to do is then come back, circle back in the monitoring to see how the plants are doing over, I guess, 10 years on that. And the invasive plant eradication, circling back, someone, a contractor will come in and deal with the invasives that might be coming into this site.
All right. Yes, sir.
Okay. So as Erin indicated, October 1st, we submitted a, I think it's a two-page letter that kind of outlines the minor changes that occurred, the submittals that we provided. I won't read every single one, but to Erin's point, in terms of a schedule update, we should be complete with all the restoration work in about two to three weeks. We use the date of November 1st. Project is wrapping up rapidly. As Erin indicated, there is post-reparation monitoring and invasive species control. We're going to initiate that next spring, spring of 2022. And that was all laid out in the restoration plan and the invasive species control plan that was, was part of our permit application as well. In terms of minor modifications, which were approved by the town during the course of this project, Erin mentioned some of those items, the turbidity curtain. We did actually preserve some of the native plants that were there as well, per Ms. O'Hair's request, and that worked out pretty well. She mentioned the outfall. We actually added some additional tide wall flood prevention. That actually helped with some of those storms. In terms of the brush and brush piles, tree piles, whatever we're calling them, on site, we talked about keeping the diameter of those logs and again, not making that crisscross pattern.
All right, talk to us. Talk to us. All right, talk to us, talk to us.
Right. What we talked about onsite was leaving logs that were reasonable in size, eight inches in diameter and less. So we have those incorporated into the piles. We have a plan as well, laying out where those piles are. There were three existing piles on the western end that both Erin and Mr. Pacini reviewed. And we talked about those as being kind of the model going forward for these new piles. So we have six additional piles that are going to be placed at really that toe-of-slope area outside of the flood plain, outside of the floodway. So they're really outside of harms way, which is what we all want.
And you've taken care of oversized logs that you.
Those are going to be removed. We're in the process of, you know, as we finalize our restoration of the area, we're in the process of picking out those oversized logs, you know, greater than eight inches in diameter. Those are going to be brought off-site for recycling. We're going to rebuild piles that we need to rebuild in those locations that we agreed to.
Good.
Terms of submittals, there's a list of submittals here. I don't, but again, three storm reports and there were other submittals that were acquired by the permit which we submitted.
Well, I think the good news is that we've gone through, you've gone through three major, major, major storms. And the area held well. You apparently did what, the engineering that you did seemed to work. Those things are all pretty admirable. I mean, you're down there along the river. You're in a sandy soil, but you're relatively flat. So erosion could be worse if you're on a side hill, but it's holding together. So now you're finishing up and your brush is under control and you're just in the maintenance and you're into review. I'm going to turn, ask the commissioners for any comments, but at some point, you're going to pull all the silt fence out of there then.
Yep. So there's one other issue that Erin had brought up at one of our sitewalks, which I'd like to address. It's a, and I can speak to the erosion and sedimentation controls now or after, but.
Well, I think they just don't want to leave them there.
Correct.
For eternity because they get tangled up, everything.
Correct. But there was a sycamore tree that was outside our work area along Wharton Brook. It's, it fell over during one of these storms. It's actually, I have some photographs here if you want to review that. But the tree itself is massive. It's at least 80 feet long total. It has a four-foot at least diameter base. It's at least 36 inches if you go up that tree about 20 to 30 feet. I mean, it is a big, big tree. It's actually still, the root ball seems to be intact. It's not really exposed. It's still covered by soil. It's holding the bank together. It's providing some stability there. It's not in Wharton Brook. It's not in the water. There's a portion of the top of it that's in the air above the water. So it's not blocking the waterway itself. And, you know, our thought on that tree is, again, it's outside our work area. Our thought on that tree was essentially to remove a couple of the lower-lying branches that could potentially touch, say, rising water, but leave that tree there because of its size and that it is holding back, holding together that area of soil there.
Well, I've seen trees lay over, for whatever reason, natural causes. Then they seem to be growing up vertically out of the trunk of the tree. So it's not a case that they're necessarily dead just because they're over.
And our biologists, our wetland specialists, who actually helped present this application last year, and in 2019, 2020, sorry, he actually visited that tree, inspected it with me earlier this week, and he thinks there might be a chance that it could survive, to your point.
Horizontally.
There's still green leaves on it. Again, seems to be connected.
Well, you're going to be back to this site 10 years, is that right?
We will be restoring up to 10 years, yeah. We have a bunch of metrics that we have to meet.
I mean, one of the conditions, if that tree becomes anything but alive, you may have to deal with it then, even though it's outside of your immediate work area. But commissioners, comments, Nick? Ally?
Good, thanks.
Deb?
No comment.
Jen?
I have nothing.
Just, if I could ask, Lucas, were you going to hand in some kind of report on that tree?
We weren't planning on handing in a report on the tree.
Okay, or pictures or something?
I do have some photographs, if, just again, demonstrating the size of the tree and the location.
All right, and just to, I point out that it might not be the permittee's problem. I mean, they didn't cause this tree to fall down and it's on Ametec property. Just notice, noting that.
It may not cause anybody any harm either.
Right, but if the day comes that it has to be taken down, I don't know if that's the permittee's responsibility. It's not as if they were digging around that tree. It's not in their work zone.
I think certainly you can argue that it's not their responsibility. I mean, it's outside their work area. It's not part of nature, the tree went over.
But as I pointed out to Lucas, but you, and the reason he was, you should be motivated, I said, to check it out because if a big storm comes and material does back up behind that sycamore could wash out your project that you've worked so hard on, you know, a portion of your project. So I think that's why he's going to keep a close eye on the sycamore tree.
That's understandable.
But I actually do wonder, the question came up, the silt fence, how long does, do they all stay in place? Or do you take some out and leave some in? Or what goes on with that?
Sure, I can speak to that now. So at the completion of our construction phase in the next couple of weeks or so, we're planning to remove the turbidity curtain that's in Wharton Brook. We're planning to remove the silt fence along the sides of the excavation area. But we're going to leave one row of silt fence. Right now, it's a double row. We're going to leave one row of silt fence along the southern boundary of the excavation area. There's erosion control blankets that are biodegradable, that are left in place. Those are going to degrade over time. There's straw bales that have been staked in. We're going to leave those as well. So as the site restores, those straw bales will continue to provide stability to the area. So that's our plan for leaving erosion and sedimentation controls at the project site. And in terms of silt fence, we recommend leaving it in place for at least a growing season.
A growing season, so that you're talking about next September.
Correct.
You might pull that out.
Right, if the site is adequately stabilized, yes.
And I'd like to ask, Lucas, what is your plan about storm reports moving forward? Do they continue to be submitted to the town? For large storms, I don't mean for your average storm.
So the way the restoration plan is written in the contingency planning that we had in place is if there were, I guess, significant erosive events in the future, we would need to come up with a plan to rectify those erosion events. So a large storm, let's say it did erode a portion of the work area, we would have to come up with a plan to rectify that and provide that to you.
And, but who would alert you that it had created a problem?
So we have a monitoring plan and there's a schedule there for visiting the site. So we'll be there routinely, as the monitoring plan states, inspecting the entire work area for things like areas that may have been eroded out.
All right, so if a storm Ari or a storm Ida happened, you would send someone out there pronto to see what the condition was?
Correct. So for next year, the first year, the first growing season, what the monitoring plan includes is monthly site visits. So we can time those. So if we know that there's a large storm that's occurring, we can perform the monthly site visit after that large storm occurs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments? Not? Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Going on to new business. 8 North Turnpike Road, Wallingford Family YMCA. Request for pre-application conference.
Oh, sorry. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you very much for having us tonight. My name is Sean Doherty. I'm the executive director for the Wallingford Family YMCA, my partner in crime.
Sam Sargent, also a board member at the Wallingford Family YMCA.
In the essence of time, I will kind of shrink down about eight or nine years of planning and efforts and whatnot from the YMCA and kind of give you, bring you to what we're talking about today.
You remember this as well, and so you got to keep it focused on wetlands. I don't want the history of the Y.
No, no, well, the goal for the YMCA is to expand its aquatics programming. At, currently at the East Side Y, we have a four-lane pool and smaller warm water pool. We are serving over 1,200, 1,300 kids per, kids and adults per year in swim lessons. We provide water exercise programs, Parkinson's water programs, et cetera. This and other growth in regards to aquatics led us to looking at an expansion of the west side facility and providing some aquatic needs there. This was all put on hold during COVID, unfortunately. And when we became, when we came out of COVID and thanks to the support of Representative Mary Maschinsky and the advocacy, we were able to secure a state bond to help us move forward with the project. We then hired Chris Giuliano to do some updated wetlands mapping. We did the topography study, the property study, et cetera. And have brought on Sam Sargent to do some pre-design work in regards to the aquatic center. What we're looking at proposing is a 26,000-square-foot addition to the rear of the facility and including an eight-lane, 25-yard competitive pool, three-lane warm water pool with a zero entry locker rooms, family and special needs locker rooms, as well as the format of the structure itself would be a glass enclosure with a retractable roof. So with that said, in that little backdrop, I want to kind of turn it over to Sam to kind of go over the layout.
Great, thank you very much.
Should be on.
Great, thank you very much. What I brought with me tonight is two site plans, one of which was done by Chris Giuliano, Giuliano Associates. And in it, it shows the wetlands, the wetland buffer, the topography of the site and the existing improvements, including the parking lot and the existing building. The thing that we're here to discuss at this point is the gray area on the east side of the existing facility. This is the existing facility here. And because we're constrained on the site, a large portion of the site is controlled by wetlands and also the slope of the access from Hartford Turnpike. We are looking to see if the commission would entertain allowing us to provide an addition on the east side of the building, which actually does encroach not only into the buffer, the uplands review area, but also into the wetlands area. What we're proposing here is that we will be disturbing about 4,000 square feet of wetland space, of wetlands. And what we're proposing is a give-back of 8,000 plus or minus square feet of wetlands in this naturally wooded area on the south side of the facility. This is an approximate outline. I have on the second sheet a representation of how the interior might be laid out. And that outline is represented here. And the icons of the various spaces are also given. Our intent here is to provide the minimum footprint that we can, once we determine the program space. So if you notice in the plan, there are areas that are outside the program space here, areas here, and those would be eliminated from the final structure to minimize the impact. But what we're looking for is the opportunity to provide this facility without eliminating large chunks of our parking lot so that people can come to the Y and use it and we will have adequate parking for them. If you know from the site, most of this zone here is in fact wooded and overgrown. There is a discharge point approximately here from a sanitary, no, I'm sorry, a storm line that comes into the site. And some work has been done here to clear that because of recent flooding that Sean had to deal with. I'm not sure what else I can add at this point. The idea is to take the wetland space that we might be taking here and keeping it to a minimum and using it to create new wetlands in these zones here at a rate of two to one. Are there any questions about what's proposed here?
It's already wetlands there, right? Or you're giving us back, is there already wetlands?
The gray area is in fact all wetlands. So you can see, it comes across from River Road, which is the access ramp to and exit ramp from the Merritt Parkway and continues basically to the up slope along the west side of, watch what you call it, Merritt Parkway, but which is off our map here. So you can imagine these wetlands come into this area, come into this area here, and probably the wetlands discharge to the north behind the adjacent apartment buildings on the adjacent site.
I stopped down there today and I noticed that somebody had cleaned out the brook and they've modified that whole area. Do you know what that's all about?
There was an area here that was disturbed. And that was because the drainage ditch that covers the discharge from that major pipe coming in from Hartford Turnpike was blocked and we had a flooding condition. And I think Sean could probably best address this one.
So is, as Sam alluded to, that, that, well, there's much water that's brought from North Turnpike, as well as the development in the back of there that goes actually through our site, through that pipe, bringing with it debris and silt and whatnot. That kind of trough area that where the four-foot pipe empties out into fills up with salt. And if, once it does to a point, it becomes, it comes blocking and forcing water back to the property, ultimately getting to fill up the parking lot. So what we've been in conversations with Erin on is that we're going to have to go into that area on an annual or biannual basis to go in and clean out that silt. When we, we were approved by the, we were given that authorization by Erin to, you can go in and you can maintain. The question was, did the contractor go beyond the maintenance? And we've had that conversation of recently, of late. And we're waiting on direction as far as if there, if there was anything that was done inadvertently, that we could definitely address it and with the contractor.
Well, I'm just concerned that you went in there and there's a berm there too. You put a berm there so the water doesn't go into the building?
We did not, no.
Contractor do it?
I, I think that when I was there, we were measuring the building the other day, and there was a lot of excavation, excavated material that was spread out over an area of maybe 200, 300 square feet. And at the end of the pipe, where the pipe discharges, there was a mound of granular material that I'm assuming was runoff material from sanding Hartford Turnpike that had come through the pipe and was discharging into that drainage ditch. He, I think he was told by Sean that, in conversations with Aaron, that he should spread the material around, but I don't think he created a berm.
Is that, is that water that comes off to Hartford Turnpike, is that a food source for that wetland area?
I'm sorry, what kind of source?
Food source, is it getting his water?
Well, there's, there's actually two catch basins right here, and basically it's taking that water and it's draining through a culvert, and the culvert, from what I understand, opens up here and then closes down again and runs to some point in this general area here, and then it's, the pipe opens up, and then it's an open trench drainage way, if you will, to a culvert that runs under Merritt Parkway and discharges on the west side of the linear trail into a kind of a lagoon area.
Now, is there a feeder brook coming down along the backside of your building on the east side of the building?
Down this side?
No, this side where you want to put the pools in.
Not that we can see, it's just a low area. There is a large wet area on the other side of the exit ramp, the entrance ramp by the motel, and there is a culvert that's being poorly maintained that runs under River Road, and sometimes water does flow across the road into this area and then discharge through the space into that drainage ditch and pass onto the highway to the Quinipiac River.
Because I can remember the water piling up behind that, that area to the north. It used to be called Greens Park, and there's a big pond there, and the pond used to come down along the back of Grand Union and then go into the culvert under the highway. What happened to that water source that was there? It's not there any longer?
I, I can't speak to that. I do know that in this area approximately right here, we dug a test pit in the surface of the asphalt. There's an old parking lot back there that's badly deteriorated, and we found a lot of granular material, and we found water at about eight feet below the ground.
Eight feet?
Eight feet. I'm trying to, I think it was Rusty Rogers who sent a backhoe over. Chris Giuliano was there too, and both Sean and I, and it was eight feet below the surface.
Now, that surface you're talking about, is that wetland area?
The area that we dug the hole in was right here at the edge of the deteriorated asphalt. The wetlands area is beyond that.
Yeah.
The wetlands area, if I may, is, the wetland boundary is here. It's that zone right there. That is the 4,000 square feet in the preliminary footprint that we're actually talking about. So you can see the wetlands boundary going across, and it's more evident in this drawing. Unfortunately, my icon is on top of it. My icons are on top of it.
Where's the roof?
Would you like me to bring the drawing over?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
We have, where is the water from the roof going to go, Sam?
Right now, right now, it's discharging through the slope of the roof onto the asphalt, but we expect to completely reorganize all of that, and it'll probably go into some sub-drainage, some surface, subsurface drainage system.
And what type of material, when you're down eight feet, what type of material did you have?
It was like a brownstone gravelly sand. That's what was coming out. It was, it was, it was more sand, though I did notice in the area here where the trench, where the pipe was cleared out, it seemed to be more clay. It seemed to be much more gray. But the hole itself was more sandy.
Soil testing then told you that you can do some type of a dry well in there to dissipate the water from the roof?
I would have to leave that to the engineers.
Ally?
I have no questions.
Debbie?
No questions right now.
Okay.
Nothing for me.
We also had a soil test done, which I can share with you as well. For Chris.
This area has, has always been wet. You're digging, you dig this trench out, but from what Aaron indicated me earlier, that you got overzealous digging this trench with sediment ponds and all kinds of things, and the spoils from the, what you dug out, depending which way you threw them, ended up filling the wetlands, which is not permitted either. They can be hauled out, but they can't be used to fill in around the pond, around the trench.
The discharge from the pipe is in fact, discharges into the wetlands. Let me just see, this is wetlands here, and this is the pipe coming down, and the, the pipe head, the wall, if you will, is the boundary of the wetlands. And this is the area where the blockage was taking place and causing the flooding.
So you excavated in the wetlands?
And that was only done with Sean in conjunction with conversations with Aaron.
And Aaron, your comments? They did what you requested?
No, the, the, I was requested, can we maintain it? I said, yeah, to the channel, you maintain the channel, and they went beyond just maintaining the channel, putting in like a basin, which is actually probably a good idea, but it's beyond what we call maintenance. Also in the pictures I hinted out, there's a pipe, maybe Sean, I forgot about this pipe when we talked earlier, Sean, there's a, looks like a new corrugated pipe coming out from the building, the side near the building, it's about yay big.
That's actually, that's actually an old pipe.
Yeah.
And there is in this corner rainwater leaders that discharge into a collection system that's part of that PVC, the black corrugated pipe, probably 12 to 14 inches in diameter.
Yeah, it's big, yeah.
And that runs diagonally across underground to that area.
It looked brand new.
Part of it is exposed.
It looked brand new.
Well, I have to tell you, the Y is a recent owner of this building and cannot speak to the previous owner's activities. I think, is that a fair way to describe it?
Yeah, yeah.
Sean? And we intend to do everything right.
Include, including the addressing the storm water drainage system the way it is now. In long conversations with Aaron, we've got to go, we have to start at Route 15, even beyond on the other side, which it connects to linear trail, and it goes out to Community Lake, to make sure that there's no blockage all the way out, and then assess from the length of our property from the start, because we're also dealing with that corner lot that the gas station actually has a drainage pipe that dumps water onto our property. And then, so we're dealing with not only the, the water that's coming down naturally, but also from other, other properties. So I think that whole area is outdated, it's, needs to be upgraded. It's before a lot of development that was upper, that was done, whether it was Ashland Village, or is the development in back of the bank that was done. This is an old drainage system that was put in, a storm drain, that was, that needs to be updated, and that's part of what our, our project is also going to be included, which also will address the, the drain, the storm drain runoff off the building as well.
But update it doesn't mean to fill the wetland, just to create a little more, which is what you want to do. I mean, you've got part of a problem is your parking lot. You want to update that, you should start putting some separators in, some catch basins, a system for your own parking lot. Do you have any, any system for your parking lot, or is it just sheet floor? What do you have there, what's there now?
Catch basins that run across and discharge into the city park.
You've got to use your microphone, Sam.
Use your mic.
Sorry, sorry. There's a series of catch basins that run across the front of the building, and the, the pipe that services them runs into the large culvert that discharges down here into the wetlands, but they're, the catch basins are very shallow to the surface of the parking lot, and we expect to be doing a lot of work in this, in this area here to make sure that the flood conditions that Sean experienced not that long ago don't reoccur.
Is that the only catch basins in the parking lot?
There's five, five in front of the, in front of the building itself, and then there's one towards the River Road section, if you run up, yeah, in around there.
I see additional piping here.
There's two, there's two over there as well.
Yes.
But again, it's outdated.
The prior owner was in front of us maybe two or three years ago before you purchased it, and then we talked to him about getting permission to clean that culvert out, because it's great that you want to do all this, but when it gets to Route 15, it stops.
Yeah.
It's never been cleaned out. So I think the first leg of your operation is going to be somehow to get permission or somehow to clean that out, because you can work all day long on your property, and it's just going to stall when it gets there.
Exactly.
So I'm not sure what your approach is on that, but.
I've had preliminary conversations with Rob Baltermitis, that has contacts with the state of Connecticut, because that's basically what's, we're going to have to work with the state on that, from my understanding. DOT.
Well, I, I think, my feeling, I'm not excited about giving up wetlands for the, for a building. I mean, you've got the parking lot, you've got some other areas. I'm not, I'm not excited about that.
What we're attempting to do, of course, is, is not have you give up any wetlands. It's, we're proposing a two to one swap for the wetlands that are removed with the creation of new wetlands, and you can see that it is a relatively small area, and if you look at my drawing.
But you also have the 50-foot upland review area around it.
Agreed.
Now, you happen to have it paved at the moment.
I'm sorry?
I think you have it paved at the moment.
Well, to address that in a minute, I just wanted to comment by shrink, shrinking, wrapping, if you will, around our actual whatchamacallit, program spaces. You can see that we would be eliminating intrusion into the wetlands, at least in this zone at this point, and probably more of it in this zone into the buffer, this dark line is a buffer, and it is conceivable that this area here might even completely go away as well as this area here. But at this point, we want to find from the committee whether or not you'll talk to us about the possibility of pursuing this as a strategy to build on this site. And to your previous question, this, this area here, you can see the edge of the tree line right there. The area between the tree line and the building is where the asphalt, the current asphalt is, and a lot of it is grown over with grass and broken up and full of holes.
So, so you have an active upland review area there?
The wetland review area is, let me choose a line, it's this dash line here, so it just touches and then cuts back.
Okay.
Allow me.
All right, you asked a question before, Sam.
Yes.
About, should, how did you phrase it? Whether you should go forward on this project? You wanted to, what did you want from the commission?
Well, what I'd like to ask, and I think it's more Sean's place to ask, is what we are proposing here is our best possible strategy for utilizing the site, and does the commission feel comfortable, correct me if I'm wrong here, allowing us to pursue this strategy and work with Aaron and this commission to come up with the best possible solution for a building in this location.
Okay. Want to take a survey from the commission?
Yes.
So in the past, sorry, in the past, we have approved some very elaborate building plans that were close to and impact wetlands, maybe not quite 4,000 square feet worth, but seeing as this area seems to be really problematic with current drainage and is possibly a lower quality wetland than could, could be, than its potential could be, I would entertain something of this nature with the idea that there could, there could be a lot of potential for improvement at this whole area, and, and it's not like we haven't done it before. I mean, look what we did with the Amazon.
What did we do with Amazon?
Well, you know, we approved a very elaborate plan.
Really? But they, did they, where did they fill wetlands?
Well, there was, there was some, like I said, not 4,000 square feet of it, but there was an elaborate plan for restoration of, or improvement of additional wetlands to replace what they were taking out on the driveway side where that steep hill is.
Nick? If you're going to tear up the front or fix the storm drains that are in the front, the catch basins, why don't you just blow out the front and put your pools out there instead in the back into the wetlands? I'm not comfortable with giving you 4,000 square feet of the wetlands or the upland review area to put your, your building in, and then you're going to have space behind that, so you, you've got to do maintenance or whatever alongside of that. So what turned into 8,000 now is 10,000 feet along the side of the building. But the front is ideal because it's trashed already. You're having problems with the drainage and the catch basins and all that stuff, why don't you just blow the front of the building out and then put the pools in the front of the building?
The downside of that is just the lost parking, because part of this, the development will also include anywhere from 75 to 100 more parking spaces on the site, and that's what we're trying to also navigate, the best use of the site.
I've never gone by there and seen that over section closest to the Hartford Turnpike, that lower section ever, any cars parked there. They're always butted right up against the building. I'm not opposed to this project, but it's not making sense to give up wetlands when you've got all that open parking space. Have you ever taken a survey at just how much parking space you use in the front? On a busy day when the seniors are there and then all the other workout people, it's probably half, maybe half the park on is full. And then the state uses it to park their trucks over there where you're going to put the wetlands in, that's where the state, that's where they hide out during the day. I don't see why you have to use the wetland area to put this structure in. So I'm not, I'm not comfortable with what, you know, what you wanted to go forward with. I'm not comfortable with it. That's my opinion, but I'm just one of many.
Debbie?
I agree with Commissioner Kearns. I'd like to see some alternative, alternate, alternate plans for the site.
Ken?
So if I'm understanding you, you're removing some, but then you're adding some wetlands. So there's going to be a net benefit? Would you say there's a net benefit to this?
Two for one. In, in fact, as I, as I pointed out, when we actually shrink wrap the facility, the schematic that you see there was just drawn and was constrained by the length of the two pools and the sanitary or storm easement that the town has that cuts through the site, and that created that angle, and it was just an arbitrary shape, and now we're starting to look at the actual program space inside, and that's shown now. I'll just flip to the second page.
Microphone.
That's shown on this drawing, and so what I'm suggesting is that this area here that might be as much as 500 square feet, and this area here that is probably close to 3,000 square feet might not be even part of this final development. We have the pools, the locker rooms, and the mechanical rooms, and so the impact would be even less than what's proposed on this drawing, and that's the 4,000 plus or minus 4,400 square feet of impacted wetlands, and so for that, it would be the 8,000 square feet. And so for that, it would be the 8,000 square feet or whatever this commission determines is an appropriate, what to say, quid pro quo for the wetlands' loss in this location.
What's going to feed the new wetlands that you want to give us two to one? See, I'm, you're going to rip the park on up and stick a wetland plant of vegetation in there? I'm not sure how that.
It's my understanding that we would be creating wetlands in these zones here. And I, do you have a copy of my share? Or I can bring this drawing over.
Yeah, the green, it's green.
The green areas, yes.
And those are not existing wetlands at this point in time.
They are not.
Correct.
And this was a solution proposed by Chris Giuliano. And as he said, it's, it's basically 8,800 square feet for 4,400 square feet minus those areas that I've just mentioned.
May I? So what's?
Say that math again?
I'm sorry?
What's that math again, Sam?
Well, in this drawing, it's 4,430 square feet.
What is?
Of wetlands that we would be asking for.
Okay.
And we'd be giving back 8,800 square feet of wetlands. And when you go to my drawing of that 4,400, these two areas could conceivably be subtracted from that. And all of this would be done in discussions with this commission and with Aaron.
And what's the condition of the wetlands right now that were taken away?
Um, in this area here?
Mm-hmm.
I, I haven't walked into the woods. It's a tangle of brush and briar. I've only gone to the edge of the parking lot and looked in. But when we dug the hole, as I mentioned, approximately in this location, it was a granular soil. It looked like deteriorated brownstone, if you will. There's probably some spoils still around that hole, you can see for yourself, and the water was eight feet down.
I think, I think you got to appreciate this probably was filled. It's not virgin because it's material that the building was built on, brought in and built on.
It's not in great shape to begin with.
But the material or the building?
That, that area, the area of the wetlands, it might not be that viable in the first place.
Well, you, you're going to have to feed water, you, how are you going to feed water into your new created wetlands? That's what I said.
The, these wetlands are actually fed primarily with the runoff from this, I won't say marsh area, but I see a lot of cattails on the south side of River Road and the spillage from that. So this is kind of an extended stream bed, sort of a swamp verge, if you will, on the water course, if there is one in here. And these areas that we're proposing would simply reconnect those gaps that are probably created by contours in the soil.
So, I, it never ceases to amaze me, and it's not only Wallingford Y, but people go to the Y to exercise and do different things, exercise, but yet they park, they want to park right on top of the front door.
Yeah.
They don't want to walk to get their exercise. They want to drive right up to their exercise. So, I mean, if you've got to use all the way to the parking lot to the other end, so be it. Maybe even take out the ramp and get some more parking and, and, or, and come in through the River Road entrance.
Chairman, what about that, there's a triangle of currently woods.
Yes.
Down on the other side, on the, yeah, on the, yep. Point again, right there.
This area here.
Could you turn that into parking if you sacrifice that area that's now on the right side? If you move the pools up to the front, take up that long flat area that goes up toward the steep hill, and then add parking on the other side?
Well, part of having a Y facility, and I've been going through this with, with Sean, is that it isn't just the activities that take place inside the building. And rather than make a building with a big parking lot, what we're also hoping to do is have some activity spaces available outside. And there has been some discussion about how to utilize this as a kind of a playfield or something like that that might be accessed through some kind of bridge or something.
I'm not talking about moving parking all the way down there, just that little corner.
This piece here?
Yes.
Yes. And I, I think the intent at this point is to create a lawn area someplace for people to be outside, rather than have a facility surrounded by, by a sea of parking.
The reason you're there is because the Y has got to be such a famous health issue with a lot of people. That's why you've gone, you've grown the way you've grown. And, you know, you took a building that you thought was going to work, and it's not going to work without taking out our wetlands, then it's not really working for you. I just, and nothing's not going to go away there. Everything that you showed me, Sam, the gray, the blue, and the pink, well, the gray and the blue, you proposed buildings are going to be there because you, you're going to have a swimming pool setup, you need a locker room or a place for changing.
Locker rooms here.
Right.
And existing locker rooms in this location here.
Right. And it's that new one is what, three times the size of the one you've presently have?
Um, I, I would say half again.
Half again? Yeah, I'm not a, it doesn't make sense. That's why, why are you so opposed to the front? Because you've taken parking away?
What it comes down to is the, the site is so constrained, and I know that you're not seeing a lot of cars now, but this is not the Y that we envision in the future. This is an old, what was it?
Grand Union.
Grand Union building that because of the Y's circumstances, they found that they can actually run a facility there. But what they're hoping to do is put a significant amount of money into this facility and make it something that all the residents of Wallingford will enjoy, rather than being just a large retail space that happened to get repurposed with exercise machines.
Pre-COVID also, we were averaging between 600 and 700 people per day at that site. We're now at about 350 to 400 and slightly increasing each day. But pre-COVID, we had, we have 189 parking spaces in times that we're 150 filled at any given time during prime time.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask some questions? I guess I direct this to Sam. It would help if, to understand all this, if the culvert, I guess you just described, there's a culvert maybe, or a few culverts under River Road that allow water to come into the, the wetlands behind the gas station?
What I've seen, what I've seen, because I have driven this exit numerous times, it is such an easy way to get from this parking lot.
Microphone.
Get on the highway.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. It is such an easy way to get to the next exit and off at Quinnipiac. I use it, and I actually have stopped in this area here thinking I might be able to walk into it, and there seems to be a pipe under River Road. I could ask the civil engineer to locate it for us, but I have also seen times when the water's been high and there has been water running over the low area, which is, I guess, between this contour and this contour, across the surface of River Road and down into this zone here.
And, and good, yes. It would help everyone to understand how the water flows on this property. Also, if your engineer can put in the, the waterway, the, the channel.
Yeah.
He left that off this property and also the culvert under, where it enters under the state property. That would help for folks to understand how the water flows.
This one here?
Yeah, I don't, the, the channel, the waterway is not drawn on the, on the drawing.
From where the pipe opens up?
Yes.
That Rusty Rogers dredged recently. It's not south of the, of the building.
The, the, the drawing that shows, this drawing has a little more information on it. It does, in fact, show the pipe, and it shows the head wall, if you will, where the pipe discharges into that area that we were discussing previously.
Yes, but then there's a channel like, I don't know, seven feet wide, like a river.
That, that does, in fact, you're right, it goes somewhat in this direction, and I have no idea where it goes. I've never walked down it.
Oh, well, it goes under Wilbur Cross Highway.
Ultimately, ultimately, it goes to the Quinnipiac River.
Yes, yes.
But believe me, I have not walked into these woods here or here or followed the water course to where it goes under the river.
Well, you can see it in the photographs I've handed out tonight. But the, the other question I have is, I don't, I'm sitting here listening, I don't understand, since this facility flooded with Storm Ida, as witnessed in the photographs, I've passed out, with sand and water inside the building, how would you prevent the new building from being flooded out? No one's addressed that. And my other question is, is, I don't see in here the FEMA, is, maybe there's no FEMA floodplain line or is there a FEMA, are you in the FEMA floodway or is that not? No, no, the engineer said no. Okay. So how would you prevent the new structure that you're, from being flooded?
That is, that is why we've hired Chris Giuliano. And we've told him that he's got to protect us.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and he's going to have to rework the drainage system because it's ridiculous that water would come in the building, and we're going to take care of that.
All right. I want to move on.
Yeah.
I think, have you got your answers?
Um, I, I've got several answers from different people. Is there a way of putting that together that you might say, Jim?
I, I think you got it as an individual group, and that's about what you're going to get. You've got to analyze it yourself.
Well.
I'm not, I'm not going to speak for the commission.
Can I pose that question again? Because at this point, we're on the verge of starting to invest a significant amount of money.
Well, what, what is the question?
The question is, would you consider as a group?
No, not as a group.
Okay. Well, at some point, you're going to have to vote.
At what? Not on your pre-application?
You're right. Is there, is there any reason for hope going forward, following this scheme as finally designed in conjunction with Aaron and the inland wetlands commission?
I'll go through this.
I don't, I don't think so. I think you need to go back before you start spending a lot of money and reconsider what you want to do there, what's going to make it work. I don't want to be the dog that barks the loudest, but, and I'm only one voice here.
Nick, I, I trust your opinion, I do. You know, that's no question.
Unfortunately, I know too much about that area, and I don't know where Green's Pond went because that used to be right there next to the apartments. There used to be a nice.
Baseball field.
Yeah, baseball field and a nice fishing pond. I'm not talking about a large one.
Was that before the highway in, went in there?
No, no, that was there when Grand Union was there.
Yeah. Yeah. So at this point, I, I believe I might have two people that are supportive, possibly three that are not supportive.
Are they out in the hallway?
Okay. I, I'm going to have to leave the decision finally up to Sean.
Okay. Okay?
Okay. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
All right, let's move on. Okay. All right, this is receipt of new applications, but I'm going to go through them because there are a couple of got this administration approval on them. A 219.116 Riverside Drive, drainage restoration granted administration approval, right, Aaron? We went over that?
Yes.
Okay. A 219.2475 Williams Road, this is where we have the site investigation, and there was, I don't know if there was slight confusion between the homeowner and the engineer, but I think the engineer always felt that the road was, the road to be able to construct the pool is where he's got it written now. The homeowner put silt fence in a different place, which may have led to be the indication that a problem was going to, a potential problem was going to happen. But this is a corner of the 50-foot upland review area. It's not, it's just going to be for the construction of the pool. So it's a modification to the permit. Can we vote on it tonight?
If it's an administrative approval, which has been suggested, it doesn't go into the wetlands, it's in the upper area, in the upland review area. I, the owner is actually here tonight, but the, I believe that construction accessway, which we all saw when we were out there, was moved to avoid the propane tank, like they didn't want the equipment getting close to the propane tank. So now that's why it was moved over down into the, so yes, they'll have to lose a few trees with this. But other than that, I see no reason, I mean, I see no reason not to approve it. It can be approved administratively. If the commission wants to do it, it would have to wait, I believe.
The, will the commission accept an administration approval on this plan?
Yes.
One yes, Jen?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. They'll accept the administration approval on this plan.
Okay, I'll, I'll get that ready.
Yeah, we already been out there, so we all know what's going on, so.
Okay. Application, let's see, application 2110.1 South Colony Road, 1047 L C, demolition improvements. Okay, we have nothing on that one, right, Aaron? Number three?
That, that was handed out tonight, or, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little, was it, did it come in? You either, I think you got it in your packet. I'm sorry, there's so much that's been coming in.
All right, it's, it's nothing that we need to talk about tonight.
This is the Stillwood Inn property. Xandry Stillwood Inn, it's behind, there's storage. Right, we don't have to talk about it tonight, I'd like you to receive it tonight.
That's right.
The application.
And item four, new applications filed in July and August are listed above under old business. Okay, that's the newest, so that's taken care of. All right, so going down a list finds, we're not going to get into Farm Hill, nothing has changed really in that program, has it? Farm Hill Basin?
No, the next step is on me. The ball's in my court, I have to write a violation letter. I've been directed to write a violation.
Can you also write to Cho School, and have they cleaned the pipe that goes under Hill House Avenue?
I was told two days, two days ago that they were doing it this week.
Will you follow through and let me know when it's done, please?
Okay.
Okay, good. EverSource, I know they've been on every High Line changing wood poles to steel poles. Primarily, they're afraid of terrorist attack that would shut down the grid. There's a set of poles on Yale Avenue I was going to talk to Aaron about, but they, I think they're just about in the brook right there working. But they got their pads down, their wood pads, and doing, doing the normal work.
And we have no, the, the commission has no jurisdictional.
No jurisdictional, that's why, one reason I didn't, and it looks like they were doing a good job of what they were doing.
Yeah.
So, four, I think you sent a, that memorandum out to all the commissioners. Information, five, six, pesticide notification of treatment. This, what pesticide notification is this? 1450 Tuttle Avenue?
Um, well, it's a pond.
Their pond or our pond?
I'm sorry?
Fresh Meadow Pond?
It's, it's a private pond.
Private pond, okay. All right. Notification of routine maintenance, Algonquin Gas, P&amp;Z Planning and Zoning, new regulations regarding stormwater, contact sheet, I W W C, a contact sheet updated. 1201 Research Parkway, Meriden, DFC of Research, 1201, re-subdivision.
Oh, that, the, the number 10, you're on number 10?
Yes, number 10.
Yeah. That came in like, I don't know, yesterday, or what, Friday, whatever, yeah, yesterday. The, as you, as you know, any activity within 500 feet of a town boundary.
Oh.
Planning and zoning or wetlands, whatever it is, has to be notified the abutting town. So Meriden notified us.
All right, very good. All right, violations, the same, same situations, 1245 O Colony?
Nothing new. Hasn't been taken, hasn't been revisited. We've, people are, got their hands full with the, you know.
Well, weren't, weren't they supposed to have a plan?
They actually do have a plan. The next step is sitting down with the new town planner to fill them in on where everything is. is. And right now, the planning department has its hands full with the data centers and the new zone rigs.
Okay. Notice 950 South Colony, the car wash?
That's, I've--
Anything changed there?
Well, I've been meaning to go look at it. I think I can handle that.
Northville Road, that's right on the corner, 1216 Northeast. They haven't done anything since last?
No, they haven't done anything. But in Storm Ida, I went out and took photographs, the brook decided to jump its bank and not make that bend. Wharton Brook decided, you know what? I'll just go this way. Took a shortcut, and I notified the town engineer to, there was some erosion there by the bridge, and to look at that.
Okay. Number five has been taken care of, 1468 Tuttle Avenue?
Okay. Number four, I would like you to--
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry I skipped over that. Number four.
I would like you to just reaffirm that the notice of violation remains.
Okay. 11 Trumbull Drive, Jill Corbin, unpermitted rating. Nothing has been done.
Yes.
Last was a problem with, on town property and getting people with bonds to work on town property?
Yes. They've done a lot of work. They've done a ton of work. It was looking really good. I have pictures from a month ago, but it's not stabilized. So it's just a good idea to keep that violation and not to release it right now.
So we will reconfirm that still a violation?
Yes. Could you vote on that? Actually, this is part of the FOI. We have to--
Need a vote on it?
Yeah, unfortunately for freedom--
Okay. Motion, I need a motion to continue the violation on 1468 Tuttle Avenue?
No, it's 11 Trumbull Drive, right? We're on 11. We did, we did, number four. We did the Tuttle Avenue one earlier.
Jesus. I'm sorry, folks. I'm--
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violation on 11 Trumbull Drive, Jill Corbin, remain in effect.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Jen.
Jen. Any discussion? Would none? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Okay. Five, I think we took care of. Number six. 801, before, let's go to number seven first. We'll come back to six. Number seven, notice of violation, 52 Hanover, Quinnipiac River, Mary Jane Webster Legace and Frank Vitale, forest removal, request for release of notice of violation. Now, they've done a lot of work out there.
Yes. The reason they called me up and said, come check it, we want you to release it, is because the folks, the relatives that were living in that house, were going, relocating. So they wanted to make sure everything was copacetic with this commission before they left. So I went out there, and it's doing great. There was no erosion.
All right, so we can release it?
Yeah, I'm recommending release. I had the report went out Friday.
Entertain a motion to release the notice of violation, or the violation on that property.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violation, 52 Hanover Street, Quinnipiac River, Mary Jane Webster Legace, it all will be released.
Second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 Okay. Now going back to application A, 18 1.2, 801 North Colony Road, Patent Brook Restoration Program. This is the tractor supply project. Okay. What's the latest with it, Erin?
I put this on the agenda because, again, because you might have noticed in some correspondent that I believe went out in the September packet, they kind of fell off the horse with the Patens Brook River Corridor Restoration Project. There was a very, very detailed plan. We went over it. It was a lovely plan. It was supposed to go on for six years. Well, they kind of, any kind of restoration plan, you've got to stay on it. You've got to stay on it, else it gets out of control. Anyway, so the ecologist is here tonight. I requested a report be filed. They were missing some of the report dates. They were supposed to be biannual reports submitted. And, you know, the reports help you, keep you on track as to what's going on. Anyway, so Sigrid Gadwa, the ecologist from Rima, is here tonight to talk about the report she handed in Monday, I believe, and I gave you copies tonight, and to bring us up to speed on why, where the project went awry, and how it's going to be gotten back on track.
Good evening.
Hello?
Microphone.
Yes, first, I thought--
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You've got to use the microphone, and please identify yourself. Just pull that closer to you. There you go.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. So this is Sigrid Gadwa for the record, working for Remake Logical Services for the tractor supply subcontractor to the Tractor Supply Corporation. And I had a lot to do with writing the original plan, and then I didn't have much at all to do with the project for two years, and got back involved year before last, and then just now, this August and September. So I have here, the report you got, I hope you all have a copy of it, is there's a minor issue with a planting table. I forgot to put the three bayberries in one area onto it. So I redid that and somewhat changed the locations. And I realized that there wasn't a map included, and it would be a lot easier for you not have to dig back and find your original plan, but to have the areas that we keep referring to and thing in front of you. So I'm giving you the reprinted out planting plan for next year and the map.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sigrid.
So I think it was the cutting program, which was the heart of the Japanese knotweed removal, went as planned in 2018, 19, and 20, but in '21, it fell through the cracks. And I guess there was, it was, you know, unclear exactly whether George Logan, the head of Rima, or me, or Matt, who is the landscaper for Dabo, it was a matter of the chain of command not really being, you know, nobody knew who was supposed to be in charge. And there had been, so it just simply, there was no mowing, no cutting done in the spring and in the summer the way there was supposed to. But we did go out and cut in mid-September on the 15th, and I did inspect the property, the restoration site, the previous early October, and that was attached to your report. And at that point, the Japanese knotweed was very low. It was like under two feet, just 20 feet. And there was all sorts of other native plants growing up in and amongst, you know, blackberries, raspberries, sumacs, tons of asters and golden rods. And because the knotweed was so low, it wasn't able to overshade them and outcompete them. And that, so that was working as hoped for. And what, the cutting in, the cutting had been done by a landscaping firm that was, came out of Eastern Connecticut, and I hadn't been involved in the, you know, how it was executed. And last fall, I mean, the final cutting last year, all the plantings that we'd installed the way we're supposed to earlier, they were all whacked off, you know, at eight, 10 inches, eight inches, whatever. And the, so many of them died. Some of them recovered. Actually, they were not all. There was a row of plantings in the front, at the top of the hill, that were fine, that were, are still doing well and are, at this point, five or six feet tall. But we decided that these, especially since there's a lot of turnover in the personnel that does the weed whacking, you know, if you, even if they get taught one time, you know, this is a knotweed, this is a golden rod, cut one, not the other, the next time it may be a different guy. And they, we decided two things. We've got to properly mark the plantings, all the surviving ones and the replacement ones that we're going to put in next spring. And we've also, we've got to do what we did on September 15th, which is I actually, I did one-on-one training with each of the guys doing the cutting, and I worked with them, alongside them for four hours. And then they continued to work for the rest of that day and the next day as well. But the results were great. They really avoided the native wildflowers and patches. And the two thriving native woody plants are staghorn sumac and box elder. And they're, box elders are amazingly resilient. They cut down, and then three weeks later, they've grown a foot. It's impressive. So other aspects of the project, the original bittersweet control using cotton paint was very effective. And, you know, I saw barely any of them last year. This year was a very good year for germination of bitter wheat seeds, bittersweet seeds. And there's a couple areas, I think, you know, maybe 10 square yards. It's in the report, where there are very young bittersweats that have just gotten started.
Well, you're back on track now. You're back on track with this project?
Oh, of course.
Yep. So we'll see great progress going forward?
I think you'll see great progress going forward. We're going to, we're going to replace, you know, taking into account a lot of the stuff that's come in on its own, including some red oaks and black cherries and the sumacs and that. We're going to do some replacement plantings, and we'll do cotton paint and garlic mustard pulling as needed in the few areas where it is needed. Mugwort really needs attention. That's a new, new and really serious invasive. And that's, if you want to read about that, that is in the back of the, that's in the report as well.
Good. Okay. Anything else, Erin?
Could you clarify, Sigrid, your approach to the knotweed? You're going to keep on cutting it? Are you going to treat it again? It was treated two years, I think, right?
I don't think it was treated at all. I don't think it's ever been treated.
Okay. So you're just going to keep on cutting?
We, the idea was to, we are, we are going to treat it. We're going to keep on cutting it, keep on weakening it, and then--
You sit the microphone. Microphone.
And then finally, we're going to cut it in August of next year. I mean, spray it in August of next year. Two cuts and then a spray.
And if you spray the knotweed, I'm not against that. I've dealt with this. It's a very tough plant. But if you spray it, how do you restore the area? Because now it's got the chemicals around there in the soil and stuff.
Well, it has to be not broadcast spraying, but spot treatment of individual plants. And just enough, I guess, injection is one method. Or just spot spraying, just the actual, you know, after cutting the bigger leaves that are extending out. And there's just a small amount of plant and spraying that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. You don't want to, you really don't want any spray to touch the ground, to touch the soil. Because it, you know, you don't want it to affect the intermixed and adjacent good stuff.
Just the next report will be due in the spring, right?
No. Okay. That's an issue, because our, our thing here, at the end of it says annual reports due in October. That's, and that's what, the only thing I ever read. I had, I'd never heard about reports being due in the spring as well as in the fall. So I guess, you know, this is part of the, this is part of the record. I don't, that's a conflict. So I don't know which trumps. Because this is part of the permit, I think, this management plan, and that says once, reports once a year.
It would be, I don't think I have with me, it's with the notice of decision. I believe it was twice a year, and the reason being, you might say, well, is it really necessary? But it creates a documentation that you, your team, went out there.
Yeah.
Now, to keep on it. You've got to have eyes on the ground. So that would be the reason for continuing with the biannual reports.
Well, I don't think we ever did biannual reports, but we can start.
Right. And it makes you go out there and look and see, oh, here's some erosion, or whatever.
I mean, if I know I'm responsible, I'm going to bug, you know--
No, I'm in agreement with you.
Make sure that happens.
All right.
Okay?
All right. Very good.
Okay, we're ready.
Thank you. I'm sure you and Erin will be in contact with each other.
Okay.
All right. Anything else to come before the commission tonight? Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you. Thank you. We'll see you, thank you.